And we have had a little drawing and Richard is the winner of getting first place to start, just to start the conversation.
I'm honored.
So for his opening remarks, we'll turn to Richard and then follow up with Bobby.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Rochester Public Volition, the Chamber of Commerce, and RCTC for giving us this venue to reach out to the public. The reason why I'm running for the school board, I grew up in North Dakota in a community that really focused on hard work ethic and had a strong emphasis on education. I think maybe a bit much has been made about the fact that I came from not exactly an affluent background, but I firmly believe that solid education gives you the ability to go from really dumpster diving for food to being able to have a great career providing for your family. And so I think that it's a great equalizer. And so for me, I just want to basically pay it forward because back home, somebody invested their time and energy into making sure that I grew up in a system that emphasized a high quality education and it's really helped me out, so I plan to do the same and pay it forward.
Bobby?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Women's League of Voters for holding the forum. I've been a longtime resident of Rochester, have been married now for 25 years, two graduates from Century High School, and I've worked as a general paraprofessional here in the district for the last 12 years. I've also been involved with SEMBA, which is a nonprofit art gallery here in Rochester, was on the board for four years, and also served on their committee. For the last four years, I've also attended at least 90 percent of our board meetings. I believe public education is our greatest asset. As a board member, I do not look at the limits of what a board member can do, but I look at it as a stepping stone to what's been able to be done. I believe in proactive and not reactive work is what we need to do. We're going to be in a shortfall in the next three years. We're looking to implement programs with costs that have not been addressed, and we need to be more involved with the community and talking about what's going on in our district. And I don't look at these as limitations, but we need to look forward and truly advocate for our students first and foremost, for our district and our community.
Thank you. The first question from the League of Women Voters goes then to you, Bobby. This is the question, what current curriculum programs in the district do you support? Are there curriculum programs that you would deny support and why?
Curriculum?
What curriculum programs? What curriculum programs in the district do you support? And are there any that you would deny support? And if so, why?
As a board member, I support our district. And with the curriculum programs that are put in our district, that is our superintendent's job. So in that aspect, if our superintendent believes that these curriculum programs is what is best for our district and is going to move our district forward, then for that reason, I do support them.
All right, thank you. It's ready.
I think that it's really important to understand our role as a board, and one of the things they do is have an amazing amount of confidence and trust in the professionals within our district. And so when it comes to the actual curriculum selection, I tend to leave it to the professionals in the same way that at the clinic, people leave the mechanical ventilation to me. But there are some, I think, that are some outstanding special things they're doing within our curriculum that are worth highlighting and giving extra oomph behind to make sure that they continue. And one of those things that comes to my mind, for instance, is the ZebraFish project. And the reason why those things are important is there's going to be a lot of talk about data and measuring things, but one of the things that's really hard to measure is student engagement, enthusiasm, and creativity. And I think that there are things that we are doing in our district that we may want to expand on or make sure has adequate resources because I think it really does that. It engages students, it gets them excited, and it really shows a creative side.
Thank you. Same question to you, Bobby. Would you like me to? Oh, I'm sorry. You should start.
You want me to answer it again?
No, no. I need to turn to the public volunteer. You will answer that question.
As you may know, the Rochester Public Schools is faced with a $10 million deficit projected for 2013-14. And what would be your individual approaches to dealing with it? Would you advocate cuts? Would you seek more revenue perhaps through a referendum or some kind of combination of the two?
So I certainly do believe that probably a combination is the best solution, but without getting too much on podium there, I reckon it's kind of that one, right? Is that I think this is very frustrating. You know, we live in a community that probably has the largest per capita patent ratio in the nation, if not the world, yet somebody in St. Paul decides that they can decide how we spend our money more than we do. But that being said, because I'll probably be able to return to that later tonight, I think that we will have, we do have a committee that will look at cuts. I think that there unfortunately will need to be some things that are cut. I think that we need to go to the community, put it out there for a referendum. The challenge that we face is unfortunately, we're going to be literally asking, because the state forces us to, to ask for money to maintain the status quo. Because it's not extra money, it's just money we need to continue operating, and that's a very hard sell to the public, and we really need to do a good job of getting on board. That's going to be the case.
Bobby?
Well, we've already started putting our committee together to look at what we would like to cut, and I look at that as a reactive, that we're being very reactive, knowing that this is coming up, our $10 million shortfall is coming up. I look at our strategic plan as putting what our district needs for our priorities. What is this district doing? What do we want to do? What do we want to say? What do we want to look like in the future? That is what's going to drive our spending, that is what's going to drive where we need to put our money. And we need to strongly look at that instead of always looking at what we can cut, what we need to get rid of. We need to look at where we're going, what we want to focus on, what we truly want this district to stay, and start there.
Next question comes from the Chamber of Commerce, Mo, and the first response will come from you, Bobby.
How will you maintain and improve our partnerships with higher education and the business community, knowing that the demands that the business community is now making on the district?
Can you just repeat the last part?
Knowing that the type of demands that the businesses are making on the district.
We already have very good, we already have good partnerships, I believe, started with our community and with a lot of our businesses, with our businesses in Rochester, but as always, we can do better. I guess the one thing that I don't, as a board member, I don't want to do is I don't want to go to them and ask them what they can do for us. What can we do for them? What are they looking for? How can we answer some of their questions or answer some of their concerns as a school district? I don't know if those questions have been asked, but I sure would like to ask them.
Richard?
I think that's a pretty fitting question, right? We're sitting in Heinz Center, Dr. Heinz, if I recall correctly, not related. Dr. Heinz was named because he was, it was named Heinz Center because he was one of the first people to really champion vocational education here in Rochester. And I know that in the previous forums, there's been a lot of talk about the need for highly skilled work, but I think the best thing that we can do is remove the stigma of vocational education. We've always sort of said, you know, if you don't hack it, if you're not the straight A student, then you should consider these vocational programs. But I think what we don't tell people is, you know, maybe you should just be considering these if you're good at it, because you can make a whole lot of money in these areas. You know, this is unfair because there's an oil situation where I'm from, but you know, if you're a skilled welder, you can make a whole lot of money, more than I can probably make here, if you have those skills. And so I think that we can start championing those programs and making sure that there's a funnel for students to feed into these programs as well.
This is from the League of Women Voters. There has been a lot of talk about better communication with taxpayers. How do you plan to improve that if elected? Goes first to you, Richard.
Yeah, I think getting out there, talking to the community, making sure that they're on board with the plan. I think one of the things that I mentioned before is making sure that the public's aware of the reason why our funding situation is the way that it is. Explaining to them that we are mandated to spend our money in certain ways, and that's why we're asking for a referendum. And unfortunately, we aren't always able to say, these are the extra things you're going to get for us. Making sure that we show them how we're accountable is important, but I think also getting out there and talking to the community, you'd be really surprised when you go door to door and you think you know all the issues. You never know the issues when that door opens. And that's important because that really keeps us grounded and makes us understand that sometimes the things that are great soundbites or even the things that make good copy, no offense or anything, but they're not always the things that are driving on everybody's mind. And it's our job to kind of push those things forward and bring those up in the board meetings, even if they're pertinent. And I actually think that's the best thing that we can do as board members.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. There have been a lot of talk about better communication with the taxpayers. How do you plan to improve that if elected?
I think one way to go out to improve talking to our taxpayers is going out and hitting those small groups that are out there. Everybody has a group. Like Richard, I've also been door knocking, and you cannot believe the groups that people have throughout this community. And just going to those groups saying, is there questions about the school district that you have, or is there questions that I can answer for you about? And just getting that information out. Door knocking has been very interesting because I believed that there are a lot of people who knew a lot about our school district. Door knocking, you find out that there is a lot of people that really don't understand what's going on in our district and don't know the good things that we are doing. And I think it's very important to get that message out.
Thank you. From the Chamber of Commerce, Mo, you have the next question, and it goes first to Bobby.
How will you ensure that all students are college and career ready, and how should we measure student success?
We already measure student success by our MCA testing and our MAP testing that we are putting into place this year. We do measure student success. I think the better question there is what are we going to do with those measurements? How are we going to look at them and how are we going to grow the district then from what our students are doing? Our district is not like every other district. We need to start looking at our data, we need to start looking at it strategically and saying, these are the students that we have, this is the direction that we need to go, and this is what we need to do to get there. And I think we could do a better job of that.
I would definitely agree with Bobby. We can do a much better job of making sure that students are career ready. I think one of the perfect examples, and we kind of alluded to this earlier, was the fact that our vocational programs, I think it was in one of the previous forums, somebody mentioned the middle school shop classes, right? It's very hard for me to envision somebody entering into a vocational program without ever being exposed to the vocation at some earlier level. And I think that that's really important because we sort of can sit up here and we can say, yes, we need to make sure that vocation is a great option for students, they understand that that's something they should consider after high school, but then through our actions, we say it's not important enough for it to be part of your curriculum, right? So I think that we need to support those sorts of things. I think that I'm very involved with the, with kind of going ahead and showing people that, look, these science careers, these health careers are important, and I think that continuing to develop those partnerships and giving them those opportunities is also very important.
Thank you. Priscilla? Public Volition goes first.
All right. Again, imagine yourself with a magic wand. But again, also, Priscilla, that you have been elected to the board and that you're in a position to enact this change. If there is one change in policy or one improvement that you would like to make to make Rochester Public Schools a better system, what would that be?
It starts over here on this one, okay? Just wanted to make sure. Boy, if I had a magic wand, well, I know that, I think it was asked this question a couple of years ago, unfortunately, I'm kind of a perpetual candidate, and I said, well, it's one word, I would get rid of allocations. And I stared across the room and people's eyes kind of glazed over and they seemed to really care. So the point is, I'd really like to lift some of the financial restraints that we have because I could say, I really wish I had all-day, everyday kindergarten, or I wish I could say, we wouldn't have to ask the taxpayer for funds, or I wish I could say, where is middle school shop, right? But really, all of those things are tied to one thing, and that's the fact that we can't spend the money the way that we decide we need to use the money. So that is kind of like the trump card, right? Because if we could choose to spend the $220 million that we're in control of the way we need to, you know what? We could do all of those things, I really, I truly believe that, but unfortunately, the system that we're in doesn't allow that. So that's my view.
Bobby?
I already believe we have the magic wand. We just have to decide what we're going to swipe the magic wand over. Do we want all-day, everyday kindergarten? Is that a priority in our district? Do we want to expand early childhood? Is that a priority in our district? Do we want to bring back shop classes? Is that a priority? We have the magic wand. We have to set the priorities in this district to use it. We have to figure out what direction we want this district to go and how we need to get there. So Matt, we have the magic wand.
I like that. I, you know, I would agree with that to some degree. I think that there certainly are barriers to getting a lot of things that we want because it was that simple. We would just go ahead and do it. But the way to really rally that, we talked about community, kind of talking to the community, getting them involved, making sure that they're in on it. But the other thing that I believe is that we have an incredible staff, they're very motivated, and the best thing you can do for motivated folks is go ahead and inspire them to kind of raise, rise up to those challenges, and we need to provide them the adequate tools to do that.
Thank you. This is the first question from the audience. I know, you sat here before.
Yep, I'm getting ready.
Get your pencil back. Technology can lead to less direct social interaction. How do we implement technology yet teach students to interact? Would be on a personal level. And that would go first to you, Bobby.
So, okay, can you just?
Yes, I. Thank you. Technology can lead to less social, direct social interaction. So how do we implement technology yet teach students to interact on a personal level?
I believe we already do that in the district. I mean, we have technology in the district. It is not like the iPads came in and that was the first time any of us had ever seen technology. We have the smart boards, we have the computer labs, we have a lot of that already. I think our district, or the classrooms that I'm in, do a very good job of limiting the technology, integrating it with what's going on, having those group discussions. We use the smart board and the kids are up there interacting with the smart board and interacting with the class. I think we already do a pretty good job within the classroom with that.
Okay. Richard?
I think I'd like to say that, although I understand where the question's coming from, I want folks to understand that technology and social interaction are mutually exclusive. In other words, a perfect example of this, I helped prepare a grant for one of our classrooms, a Special Act classroom, looking at integrating, it happened to be tablet technology, into the classroom. There's a very expensive piece of device called a DynaVox, and it's a communication tool. It's big, it's heavy, it looks like a ventilator I actually use, and it costs like $4,000. You can replace that, and that DynaVox is used, I should be clear here, for as a communication tool, so you kind of push the button that may say, I'm hungry, I want to go play, I want to do this. You can replace that $4,000 piece of device with a $400 iPad with a 99 cent program where you can snap a photo of the food so they can tell you exactly what it is that they want. So there are some very smart ways that actually improve communication that we can use this technology for. So I just want people to understand that it's not mutually exclusive, but I understand where the question's coming from.
The second question from the audience. In the worst-case scenario of a large budget deficit, how do you prioritize spending to continue versus spending to cut? Want me to read that again?
Yes, sorry, it's on the slide.
Yes, that goes to you.
I think that you use a pretty simple litmus test when you, and this kind of ties into the mission statement too, if that question comes up, but I think the litmus test is what's in the best interest of students, right? And unfortunately, we have made cuts in the past, so you're going to come to a point where you have several things on the table, and unfortunately, there's going to be several things that the litmus test says, if you cut this, it's going to adversely affect students' education, it's going to reduce their chance of getting that career that they want, that opportunity that they want when they leave high school. And so I think that we basically need to go ahead and decide which ones we prioritize, and I think that we're honest to the public, because unfortunately, in the past, we've cut things before, and we haven't told people the truth. That is, if we're going to cut something, we have to understand that it's probably not going back. And the only reason I say that is you don't understand how angry I get when I go door to door, and somebody says, when are you going to bring back Elementary Orchestra? It's been gone for 10 years ago, like four years ago, right? And we weren't honest at that time, so you got to be honest about that. And if you aren't willing to sacrifice it, then you shouldn't get rid of it.
Bobby?
Can you repeat it?
Yes. In the worst-case scenario of a large budget deficit, how do you prioritize spending to continue versus spending to cut?
How do you prioritize? I think you have to look at that point, I'm assuming that it's a zillion-dollar cut that this person is talking about. I believe the first thing you have to do is get back to exactly what our mission statement is, and our students do come first. And what do our students truly need from the onset? And then everything else would be extra. We would have to, we would have to start from that point and say, this is what they truly need, this is what we truly need to do for our students, and go from there.
I'd actually like to comment there, because I don't think it is a zillion-dollar cut. You know, I think that this question really gets to the heart of why this election is important, because we are facing a major cut coming up, and we really need to ensure that folks at the helm are comfortable, one, with large budgets, and they know how to go ahead and tell systems or sites and stuff like that that are underperforming that they need to shape up or make major changes. And that's something that I have to do on a regular basis. I work with budgets of about $6.5 million, and I have to tell sites sometimes that aren't performing, either change or you face a cut, and that's hard to do, but that's probably our only choice.
Okay. Question number three. Another two-part. What has been the overall impact of state and federal mandates on the Rochester Public Schools? And secondly, would you encourage more of these directives or more local control of our schools? And that first one goes to you, Bobby.
Okay, second part of the question again.
The first part is what impact of federal estate mandates, and then would you encourage more of these directives or more local control of our schools?
I believe in local control for our schools. I think we need more local control of our schools. With that being said, I also believe that at a federal and a state level, we have to set the priorities and level set and have those high expectations for what needs to be done. If we give all local, if we have all local control, our district would be flourishing, but I don't believe all districts would be. We need to, in order to move all districts forwards, if we are looking at everything as a country, we need to have those high expectations at a federal level, move those down to state, and be able to do that at a local level.
Okay.
Yeah, like Bobby, I certainly believe in local control of our budget. I know that Mr. Munius has done some great work with other districts here in southeastern Minnesota to lobby the state, to help them understand the issues that we face, and I absolutely echo that. And I also feel that we do set the standards here, and I have very high expectations of our district, because I truly believe, you know, in other places, we could say, I think we're going to be the best district in the nation, but this is the one place where we can do it. I mean, we've only 100,000 folks, we've got IBM, we've got Mayo Clinic, we've got numbers and scores of other great businesses and resources in town, and more importantly, we have very hardworking people that emphasize the importance of education, that truly care about our community. And in the end, that's what's going to help us raise this district up and improve on the great things that we're already doing and really make it the best district, not just in the state. I really think that we can achieve this. I really think it's achievable to be the best district in the nation by providing ample opportunities and unique opportunities you can't get anywhere else, and they can't be duplicated.
Okay, thank you. Question number four from the audience. What kind of data slash reports do you want to see presented at school board meetings on a regular basis so that the community can see how the district is performing? And that goes to you, Richard.
All right. So I usually try to stay away from the data stuff because that's kind of my business and it usually makes people fall asleep. So I think growth models are definitely things that I like to look at. And I'm not trying to pull down too hard on things, but let me give you an example of some of the things maybe that I don't want to see, right? So a lot of times at school board meetings, they'll present data on this many, I remember seeing through a meeting some time ago where they said, this many students took the SATs. And there's a lot of talk about how can we prove that number, and why did some people take it and some people didn't? That's really misleading. One, because not everybody takes the SATs or ACTs, which I think was the more recent meeting, but those two things need to be actually shown in conglomeration, because how many people took an exam to actually get into college? But then the question is, is that even the best question? The real question is, when students are ready to graduate and they decide they want to do something, how many students were able to do it? And if they weren't able to do it, was it because they weren't prepared or they didn't have the means? Because I didn't go to the college I wanted to in Washington, DC, but it wasn't because I was ill-prepared for school, it was because I didn't have the financial means, and that was the fault to my district.
Repeat?
What kind of data slash reports do you want to see presented at school board meetings on a regular basis so that the community can see how the district is performing?
Well, I would love to see every piece of data and absolutely every single solitary report out there on education and what our district is doing at the meetings. I would love those meetings, I would love the 10-hour meetings on data, because to me, that is fun. But the general public, I'm sure, doesn't want to do that. I believe the important data meetings that need to be out there are our testing data. We need to start asking the big questions on what that truly, what that truly means and what we're going to do with that data. As far as the rest of the data reports, those need to be on our websites. We do a pretty good job now getting some of our data out there, but the rest of the data and how, or how to access that needs to be out there for the people who do want to look at that data, who want to drill down in that and start asking those type of questions on what it truly means.
Because it's the data question I have.
Here's your last one.
That's right. So I want to be clear, so there's data that covers the whole district, but I think the most valuable data for the public is the more regular information that we can provide parents, so they can know where their kids stand. I think that it would be really nice if there was like a small portable technology that students might be able to use that has quizzes on it and stuff like that, and would transfer data into a system that would let parents know exactly where their kids struggle, but I don't know what kind of technology that would be. But the point is, I think that's the most important information that you can get out there, because really, in the end, that's going to be the actionable data. But you can put out once a year, that's the actionable data.
Thank you. Fifth question, and we'll go first to you, Bobby. In your opinion, what are the main responsibilities of a school board member?
A school board member has three responsibilities. They look at policy, they manage the superintendent, and they manage the budget. Those are the three jobs of being a school board member. I believe the school board member's job goes beyond that. There are other things we can do. I believe we need to be out in that community, in the community. I believe we need to be out in our schools, talking to our staff members and all our staff members about what's going on. But the true job of a school board member is budget, policy, and the superintendent.
Thank you. Richard, in your opinion, what are the main responsibilities of a school board member?
Yeah, so I know we hear a lot about policy, managing the budget, and hiring a superintendent, and those are all true. But I think the real challenge of a school board member is to both inspire and empower the staff to carry out their mission. And the reason why I say that is I've learned less in the hard way, I've managed a lot of projects, and I'll be honest, I haven't always managed them in the best ways when I was younger. But when you don't inspire motivated people, they get motivated to go get another job. And we need to make sure that we retain our best staff, and the best way that we can do that is to both inspire them, to let them know we believe in them and that they can get it done, but more so to follow that up by empowering them to make sure they actually have the appropriate tools and resources necessary to carry out those goals. Because if you inspire somebody and then don't give them the resources to carry out that mission, they're just going to get frustrated, and eventually, they're going to get that mission, they're just gonna get frustrated and eventually they're gonna get smart and they're gonna leave. So you need to both inspire and empower those, and you do that with the community as well. And that's our responsibility as board members.
Thank you. Next question from the audience. Simone. The district implemented a new test, NWEA slash MAP, M-A-P. Implemented this new test this year that all students will take. What do you think about the amount of testing done in the district currently? And how will this new test impact that? Goes first to you, Richard.
So I think that we do have to be cautious about the amount of testing that we do. What we really need to do is ensure that the testing that we do is useful and actionable. In other words, that it doesn't take a lot of time for the results to come back to the teachers and the staff, the people that are able to act on it. And that's not something like a raw score. Like if I tell you my SAT was 1280, okay, and it doesn't tell you what you need to teach me or where I struggle. So it needs to be more specific than that. It can't be just raw scores. It has to be very specific content-wise, if it's gonna be actionable or if we're gonna actually change the course of things. On top of that, as much as I love data, and I'm a huge data guy, and we can talk for hours afterwards if you're interested. The truth is that standardized exams don't necessarily do a great job of measuring other important things when you talk to business leaders, which is, we're looking for creative people, we're looking for responsible people, we're looking for folks that can think outside the box. We want to know that students in our district, for example, are very engaged and excited about learning. And you can actually do quite well on a standardized test and not give a hoot. So I think that that's important to understand as well.
Thank you. Bobby, you want me to read this question again?
Sure.
The district implemented a new test, NWEA slash MAP. What is that test? I'll have to find that out. This year, and they implemented this test this year, that all students will take. What do you think about the amount of testing done in the district currently? And how will this new test impact that?
Well, I will tell you, I am one of them that is very excited about the MAP testing. I don't know tons about it. What I do know is my sister uses it in Wisconsin and she loves it. What it does is it aligns with our state standards. And we get immediate feedback from these MAP testings exactly where our students are. To me, that's exciting. To me, to know exactly where my students are in my classroom and what I have to drill down to and what they need, that is, that is just an awesome thing. We do have a lot of testing, but we also, the testing also brings value to the district. I think the better way to look at the testing is, are we using the testing to its best potential? Are we using the data that we are getting from our tests to actually move our students forward? Because that's the ultimate goal with testing, is to move, to get the data that we need and to move our students forward.
Thank you. Well, I see we have some from the last session. These are questions you asked from the last people and we ran out of time, so we're gonna ask these people.
Wow, good for us. Here we go, page two.
Get your pencils out one more time. All right, so audience question number seven. And that would go first to Bobby. In Rochester, we have seen a huge demand for our choice schools, with most or all having long waiting lists. Where do you think the school district should be going with choice schools? And what should be the next step?
I'm gonna be real honest, I don't know what our next step for choice, for choice schools is. I think what we need to do is look at our choice schools and ask those parents why they're on that long list. Why is there such a long list for our choice schools? Are they, is it because of who is there? Is it because of the programming that they have in place in that school? Why are they on that list and what are they looking for? Can we answer those needs at another school? I think those are the questions that we need to be asking.
Richard, can you read this again?
No, I actually totally understand the question. You know, I get asked actually a lot, you know, we talked about those, you never know what's behind door number three when you're door knocking, and this actually comes up a lot. And I really certainly support choice schools. I think the best advantage that choice schools provide is just the simple fact of options. And notice, I'm not necessarily saying that the education at choice school is even better. But, you know, it's no different in medicine or in education that we know that one size doesn't always fit all. And that's the important part about choice schools. Because a lot of people ask me, why do we even support choice schools at all? And the point is that it just gives you another option. It does pain me to know that there are parents that feel that their child needs an alternative or another option, but they can't get in. That being said, I'm not necessarily saying that I think that there's something extra unique about choice schools that if we applied a certain choice model to the whole district, that we're gonna see huge gains. Because I think that it's also a very selected population, you know? There's obviously very involved parents and they want to get their kids into those programs and that's part of it.
Thank you. Last question. This is interesting. Were the Chicago teachers justified in striking? Given the same conditions in Rochester, would you support a teacher's strike?
That comes here first, correct?
That is yours.
Okay, great. I'm glad that somebody asked this. And please don't take offense to this, but this is what really burns me. This election, this whole forum, is about Rochester and what we can do here. And the problem is, when we start worrying about what's happening in Wisconsin or we worry about what's happening in Chicago, we miss the fact that there is nowhere else in the country that has what we have here, okay? I don't care what's happening in Chicago. I care about what's happening right here in Rochester. And the fact is that there's ample opportunities here that we are not fully utilizing. There's no reason why with the, everything from the brain power in our district to the willpower and the focus on education in our district, that we don't have the absolute best schools in the country. We've got great schools and good schools, but we can do even better. And I think that we need to not focus, this isn't a national election, we don't need to focus on what's happening in Chicago. We need to put the focus on students right here in Rochester. And I hear this a lot, but I think the point is to understand what we have here and what's going on here. That's not happening here.
All right, thank you. Bobby, same question.
All right. I'm gonna kind of disagree with Richard on this one. I don't know if Chicago was justified or not. To be honest, I didn't follow it that closely. But what I will tell you is, I will look at Chicago so it doesn't happen here. I will look at New York and their successful schools and their successful charter schools and see what's going on there to see if it can be implemented here. I will look beyond Rochester because in order for Rochester to be strong and to move forward, yes, we have great businesses here. We have the best medical facility here. But in order to move our district and our students forward, I think we need to look beyond Rochester and see what other districts and what other states are doing, and we can bring that home.
Thank you. And that ends the questions. So now we go to the closing remarks. And Bobby, you won the first place on this one. So you will be the first to go with your closing remarks.
All right. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And as a school board member, I believe that we need to, we need to do proactive work and not, and reactive needs to happen. To be a proactive board member, understanding of the programming that we will be implementing in our district is a must. We need to start understanding what we are implementing, ask the tough questions for our students and our district to move forward. We need to know and understand the needs of our schools so our policies support our students and staff. We need to have a clear understanding of our state policies and education and know how it affects our district and start working in tandem to make these things happen at a community and state level in order for education in Rochester to be successful. These types of proactive actions need to happen for change to, for change to happen. I believe that education is our greatest asset and as a board member, I'll take that very seriously. We have a good district with the potential to be great. I'm prepared to do the tough work, advocate for our district, and with your vote on the sixth, I know that we can move our district forward. Thank you.
And Richard?
I think when you make your decision about who you're gonna vote for coming up in November, when you think about what it is that I'll do for the district, it's very simple. I have a pretty simple litmus test when I try and make decisions about what we're gonna do. And it's what's in the best interest of the students, what's gonna help them achieve their personal and career goals as they move on? Because this is just the beginning of the rest of their life and all the important decisions that come thereafter. And for me, it's very personal because for me, education was the great equalizer. So I think that you can count on me to make my decisions based on that. In addition, I think that I really work to be a consensus builder. I have a reputation for being able to get large teams to work together and I'll bring that to the board. I'm able to look at one issue, respectfully disagree with folks on it, but then not hold that opinion when it comes to the very next issue. And that's the scientific mind. And then finally, I think that I'm the best candidate for what community members say.
Thank you. Thank both of you for being here and participating. Thank you. Simone, so we met. Am I giving you that? Thank you all. It's been a long night.